This meeting is being recorded.
Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, June 9, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is Citizen Input for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody on Zoom possibly with a hands raised feature or phone numbers that are unrecognized? Okay, none there. We do have three items that had come into CitizenInput@deschutes.org email. So one of them is from Megan Rochelle regarding the concern of arising COVID cases. So this was received on May 28. So we did have a budget week last week. So this is our first Wednesday board meeting since then. So this is a little bit aged, but I want to thank her for that input. We all know that this is still an issue in our community and we're working through it. Another one is from Irene Laver congratulating our staff on the excellent coordination of the vaccine clinic at the fairgrounds. Everyone was polite and well organized. So we've heard that a few times. So we're really happy that that's worked so well. And another one is without a name, but it's mentioning leave her alone Deschutes County referring to a media coverage and a living arrangement. And I'm thinking this is for Southern Deschutes County. Yeah. So the header was Lapine Senior may be forced to move after 20 years. So I'll acknowledge as a little bit feedback on that. I was able, I think it was in the media on Friday. On Saturday I was out at that property with her and communicating with her directly. And also since Community Development Department has offered a RV occupancy 12-month permit with ADA accommodation. So that's the definition of where what's been offered at this point. So it's still kind of in in motion, but a lot of a lot of feedback on that topic. And the original news story said eviction notice and it really wasn't. It was a code enforcement notice, which a couple steps down could have been an eviction possibly, but it was not a direct eviction notice on that day. So thank you very much for that input. I've spoke to a bunch of people on that topic for the Lapine Senior and we're working through it at this time.
Yes. And I just wanted to announce that today the guidebook for the Deschutes County Fair and Rodeo is out in the Ben Bulletin. It came out this morning. It will be out in the community in a couple of days distributed Lapine, Sun River, Redmond, everywhere. So please look for that. The dates are the July 28 to August 1. The livestock auction for the 4H and FFA kids will be on Saturday, which will be the last day of July. And we do have an NPR rodeo Slack, which if you don't know, that's where all the contestants are. That will be Tuesday night starting at 6:00 PM. So Gladys Appington, the president of the rodeo and fair association would love to see as many people as possible at the Slack. So it's just the start of the whole week and do hope to see you there. Tickets will go on sale online on July 5. So we are limited, but it'll be a great opportunity. Thank you to the community for people that have already donated. And I'm sure they would love to hear from more volunteers.
Slack will be Tuesday night, the night before the fair opens.
Right.
You'll be able to just park, go right in, sit in the stands and watch some real rodeo action.
Yes.
And this won't be the produced rodeo, but it'll be the the event.
No, it's, yeah. Well, according to my husband, it's not as much fun as the real rodeo.
Oh, but it is good.
But I you never know what you're going to see. So yes, it's 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 a fun night and it'll be like the timed events and everything unless they have an enormous amount of contestants and you know they might. It's it is an NPR rodeo. It's received many awards in our community. So I want to thank Gladys for her incredible leadership for that.
Well, and just along those lines a little bit, I just really appreciate Slack sometimes in Lapine and in Sisters. You know, it's the morning Slack sessions right as the the haze is breaking off and it's kind of a quiet event. But man, there's some rodeo action happening during the Slack. So good to good to point that out. Okay. So seeing nothing else, we'll move to the consent agenda. A few letters appointing different.
So now we found Ariels.
Yep.
So move.
Second. So I'll acknowledge I have not reviewed the minutes, but I'd be comfortable if there's comfort in the other board commissioners on this. Just that would have been my thing this morning, but I ended up taking phone calls and I didn't get to it. So with that, I just acknowledging I haven't even looked at these at this time. I usually get to call them for the vote. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Action items number 10, Deschutes County Adult Treatment Court Grant Application. Trevor.
Good morning, Commissioner DeBong, Commissioner Dare, and Mr. Chang. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
I am here this morning with Lisa Nichols from the Deschutes County Adult Treatment Court. She is our court coordinator as well as Judge Gretchen Lee. He is our adult treatment court judge. And we were here this morning because we were seeking permission to submit application for the adult treatment court grant through the Criminal Justice Commission. It is the grant that has funded our adult treatment court probably since around 2006. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa because she's going to present some details for you guys. And then it'll be available if you guys have any questions, but I'll turn it over to Lisa Nichols.
Great. Thank you. Hello, Lisa.
Still on mute.
There you go.
Okay. Are you all able to hear me?
Yes. Nope. Now it went away.
Now we can't hear you.
Yeah, almost.
Doesn't say you're on mute, but we couldn't hear you.
Heard you for a moment.
Yeah.
Okay. Is this working?
There you go. Yes.
Okay. Sorry. I had to call in because we're having some technical difficulties here. Judge Gretchen Lee is here with me, but we're having some camera issues. So we're trying to get that worked out. But again, good morning commissioners and thank you for the opportunity to present the grant that we're applying for this year. So we are looking for approval from the commissioners to submit an application to the Criminal Justice Commission as we have in the past. The fiscal impact of the fund request is covered by the majority of it is by the grant. The remainder of it is covered by partner agencies, you know, as budgets allow mainly the Community Justice Department, Deschutes County Sheriff and the District Attorney's Office. So a little bit of background, there has been a specialty court in Deschutes County operating with the Criminal Justice Commission financial support since 2006. The most recent biennial, we were funded at, excuse me, $241,000, which was a 30% reduction from the prior biennial. Funding had traditionally been a formula-based application and last last grant cycle, they shifted it to more of a competitive model based on what the actual resources and treatment costs, personal costs, et cetera are. So despite the 30% reduction, we were able, you know, to offer services at the current service level throughout the biennial. This year, there's a couple of changes that I would like to note. First is, as Trevor mentioned, that the grant administration will be moving from Behavioral Health to the Community Justice Department. This, you know, we're thankful for our time with the Behavioral Health Department, but recognize that, you know, with the stabilization center, there's increased responsibilities there. And looking at the overall best match, the the treatment court program really does work aligned better with the business operations of community justice. And we do coordinate, you know, to a very large extent with our services. Additionally, the court transitions from a family drug court to an adult treatment court, and we did that on March 1. So the the family drug court was specifically for parents only. The transition really allowed us to kind of widen the scope for folks that we can serve in Deschutes County. So we will still prioritize parents who have children that have been removed or at risk of having them removed as a result of, you know, an STD, but we'll also accept referrals for adults without children as capacity allows. And we've accepted two folks currently that don't have children. And our program was set up even as a family drug court on the adult court model. So there's really no modifications necessary to to serve folks without children as well. So a couple of highlights or elements of our program are that we have a single court, a single judge court, excuse me. The the program is judicially supervised treatment for individuals with an STD as an alternative to incarceration. So a large majority of our folks do have downward departures. Also, you know, really the focus is to help folks maintain long-term recovery. So we're looking at, you know, skill building, use of skills, recovery, recovery towards the pro-social lifestyle as as long as they're substance disorder. And then we do offer parent education to the parents in the program and some and some individual coaching as necessary. Comprehensive supervision, case management, which includes assisting participants with housing, vocational, educational, and employment needs. So with the new grant cycle begins July 1, adult probation and parole will be the administrative holder on behalf of the adult treatment court. So I looked at, you know, a couple of pro-
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Great. Thank you.
...
Still on mute.
There you go.
Okay. Are you all able to hear me?
Yes. Nope. No, it went away.
Now we can't hear you. Doesn't say you're on mute, but we couldn't hear you.
Heard you for a moment.
Yeah.
Okay. Is this working?
There you go. Yes.
Okay. Sorry. I had to call in because we're having some technical difficulties here. Judge Gretchen Lee is here with me, but we're having some camera issues. So we're trying to get that worked out. But again, good morning commissioners and thank you for the opportunity to present the grant that we're applying for this year. So we are looking for approval from the commissioners to submit an application to the Criminal Justice Commission as we have in the past. The fiscal impact of the fund request is covered by, the majority of it is by the grant. The remainder of it is covered by partner agencies, you know, as budgets allow, mainly the Community Justice Department, Deschutes County Sheriff, and the District Attorney's Office. So a little bit of background, there has been a specialty court in Deschutes County operating with the Criminal Justice Commission financial support since 2006. The most recent biennial, we were funded at, excuse me, $241,000, which was a 30% reduction from the prior biennial. Funding had traditionally been a formula-based application and last last grant cycle, they shifted it to more of a competitive model based on what the actual resources and treatment costs, personnel costs, et cetera, are. So despite the 30% reduction, we were able, you know, to offer services at the current service level throughout the biennial. This year, there's a couple of changes that I would like to note. First is, as Trevor mentioned, that the grant administration will be moving from Behavioral Health to the Community Justice Department. This, you know, we're thankful for our time with the Behavioral Health Department, but recognize that, you know, with the stabilization center, there's increased responsibilities there. And looking at the overall best match, the the treatment court program really does work aligned better with the business operations of community justice. And we do coordinate, you know, to a very large extent with our services. Additionally, the court transitions from a family drug court to an adult treatment court, and we did that on March 1. So the the family drug court was specifically for parents only. The transition really allowed us to kind of widen the scope for folks that we can serve in Deschutes County. So we will still prioritize parents who have children that have been removed or at risk of having them removed as a result of, you know, an STD, but we'll also accept referrals for adults without children as capacity allows. And we've accepted two folks currently that don't have children. And our program was set up even as a family drug court on the adult court model. So there's really no modifications necessary to to serve folks without children as well. So a couple of highlights or elements of our program are that we have a it's a single court, a single judge court, excuse of our program are that we have a single court, a single judge court, excuse me. The program is judicially supervised treatment for individuals with an STD, as an alternative to incarceration. So a large majority of our folks do have downward departures. Also, you know, really the focus is to help folks maintain long-term recovery. So we're looking at, you know, skill-building, use of skills, recovery, recovery towards the pro-social lifestyle, as long as their substance use disorder. And then we do offer parent education to the parents in the program, and some individual coaching as necessary. Comprehensive supervision and case management, which includes assisting participants with housing, vocational, educational, and employment needs. So with the new grant cycle begins July 1st, adult probation and parole will be the administrative holder on behalf of the Adult Treatment Court. So I looked at, you know, a couple of program numbers I wanted to share with you all. The court has been in transition for a few years, and I believe this shows the progress that we're making. So I think everyone has a copy. What I really wanted to highlight was the graduation and terminations. So we really have increased our graduation rate, reduced the amount of terminations. And I know they're not direct comparisons, but I think for the last fiscal year, only having, or two years, excuse me, four people terminated speaks, you know, well of the changes we've made. So, you know, we've kind of refined our screening and intake process, using evidence-based practices appropriate for this population, and I think it reflects in the numbers. And below that, there are, you know, a couple of things I've highlighted, too. So 32% of our folks had open DHS cases when they came into the program, and they had all been successfully closed at graduation, which is impressive. Another number close to that is 50% of our folks at intake had their children with an alternate caregiver. Upon closure, this was reduced to 9%. That's a significant reduction, and I think shows, you know, the benefit of focusing on the whole family. Homelessness or lack of sober housing, we have 73% at intake, and everybody was housed in a safe, stable, sober housing at graduation. And then 82% unemployed at intake and at graduation, everybody was working. So, you know, significantly increased their social capital. So the budget for our grant application is a little over $534,000. We are applying as an adult treatment court, again, versus a family drug court. And the application has similar components to prior years. However, there is emphasis this year on creating targeted strategies in partnership with community stakeholders to address populations experiencing disparities. So, you know, that is something we'll be working closely with adult parole and probation, and our other community partners with as we move through this grant cycle. The local public safety coordinating committee did provide a letter of support last month. And one other change with the application this year is that the Lipstick Will review and approve semi-annual reports. So the goal from the CJC is for us to be more aligned with, you know, the administration and community partners that we're working with. The budget is broken down pretty self-explanatory. There are a couple of differences. We are asking for some participant supports this time. That's really to respond to, you know, some community barriers that folks have, especially with COVID. The need for sober, safe housing has increased, and so we're asking for some additional money to support that. And then for full funding for our drug testing at this point. Our partner agencies, obviously Adult Probation and Parole, the County Sheriff's Office, the DA's office, Public Defender, Department of Human Services, Child Welfare, also works with us, as does CASA, the Deschutes County Health Services. And then we work with Bend Recovery Homes, a nonprofit that works with us, and then obviously our substance use and mental health, kind of service providers that we contract within the community. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Judge Crutchley, and I'm gonna try and shift my computer around, so you all can see him. His camera is not working. And then we can take questions after this.
Wonders of Zoom.
Yes. Welcome, Judge. Good to see you. It has been a while through this COVID year.
I hope that everyone can see and hear me. Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you. I think if we stay on...
Now it says mute.
Yeah, stay on Lisa Nichols video, maybe. Yeah, there we go. I see it's... Okay. Well, we had you just a moment ago. Now we don't hear you.
Okay.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
All right, thank you. All right, I appreciate Ms. Nichols for helping me out this morning, having some technical difficulties on my camera. And I wanted to say good morning to each of you, and thank you for having me, and allow me to speak on behalf of the Deschutes County Adult Treatment Court. I know that Commissioners Dare and DeBon are really familiar with the program here. You've attended many of our graduation ceremonies, and we really appreciate that. Commissioner Chang, I know you're new on board, and I anticipate that we'll be seeing more of you once we get through this COVID restriction. We've been having graduations even through COVID, but we've had to do them virtually. So we miss you guys, and we look forward to having you again in the future. As a reminder, you know, the mission of the Deschutes County Adult Treatment Court is to help adults recover from substance use disorders, become pro-social members of the community, and ensure that parents act in the best interest and welfare of their children. And the program accomplishes its mission by providing judicial supervised treatment to families with substance use disorder as an alternative to incarceration, and helping participants obtain skills to maintain long-term recovery, pro-social lifestyle, and providing parent education to all participants, and providing comprehensive supervision and case management to identify and address barriers to recovery, and ensure that participants comply with program mandates, and also assist the participants with their housing, vocational, educational, and fundamental needs. And that last part, I want to touch on, because we know, you know, that's really important for us here in Deschutes County. We struggle, as you know, with homelessness here in Deschutes County. And also, you know, many of our participants who come in because of their substance use disorder and addiction, they lack housing, and so many of them are homeless. And, you know, one of the key things that happened, for example, last year, during our last fiscal year, we graduated 22 participants. And when 73% of them who came to the program were homeless, didn't have home. And by the time they left the program, they all had housing. This is huge. In addition, you know, 82% of them came in, they were unemployed. And by the time they all left the program, they all were unemployed. These are things, I think, impact our community and the livability of our community. We are literally changing the lives of individuals here in this program. Our criminal justice system isn't really set up effectively to monitor and reduce the civism, but Adult Treatment Court is. And we do this effectively, efficiently, and with really, really outstanding results. I tell all my participants and everyone who attends our graduation, it's something that I say, and I will continue to say, is this is really the most important thing that I do as a judge. I really enjoy Adult Treatment Court. I really enjoy the, seeing the impact that we make here on the lives of the people who come through our program. And I'm really proud to be a part of this, and I wouldn't change it for anything. So I want to encourage you to support us. I know you do, and I know you will continue to do so. But I just wanted to give you some highlights and highlight what results your support are bringing to this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much for your efforts on the bench in this program. There's a long history of us in Deschutes County offering this program, and just the opportunities of that pro-social behavior, employment, housing, you know, supportive system. I have been to the graduation, and there's usually tiers and family in the room, and previous participants in the program. So we've got a long history of really doing good things for people in their time in need. So thank you very much for your efforts.
I'm so glad, Judge Crutchley, that you're the head of this program. I know how much it means to you, and it means to the community. And I'm just hoping, I noticed that, you know, last time, the funding was down 30%, and I believe it was still matched. We're asking, you're asking for the $534,000. It seems like it should be funded at that level. It's now competitive. When will we have an answer on that, and will we need to step up and make up the difference?
All right, so I can have Ms. Nichols address those questions for you, and so she'll take her camera back.
Ooh, no. Oh, I didn't mean to do that. But anyway, no, thank you so much. It's, you know, keeping families together, it's critical. Maybe they need a new system over there.
Uh-oh, do you need new computer system?
You guys need a new system.
Trevor may have information also.
Yeah, I can probably answer this question. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I believe that the award will be likely come out sometime in August. And so this year, we're asking for full funding of Lisa's Treatment Court position, and we are asking for some additional funds to help support her with an assistant. In the past, the Oregon Judicial Department, if that individual position is not funded fully, they have stepped up and they cover the rest of that position. So, I mean, we were asking for the funds from the grant. If it doesn't happen, in the past, the Oregon Judicial Department has been able to cover those. And then also, the Sheriff's Office and adult parole and probation, we have been able to utilize some of the resources that we provide. We'll bring in their populations as well, just because it's a much smaller population than our population. So we'll bring in and kind of try to offset some of those. But we are asking for the full cost of the program, in hopes that maybe we can get that full funding, so I don't have to worry about those things in the future, so.
It's so successful. I thought it was so disappointing when they cut it back. I mean, oh my gosh, keeping families together, making a huge difference. People are unemployed and housed when they graduate. You know, these are outstanding records, and we should, you know, we should be funding it. So, thank you. Thank you, Trevor.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that this sounds like an amazing program. I regret that I still have not been able to make it to a graduation yet. I do think we have, we have some challenges with meeting schedule conflicting, meeting schedule conflicts. But I will very much look forward to getting to a graduation sometime in the near future. And I'm just super excited about the work that you're doing to help people whose lives have unraveled, to put it all back together, and get off on the right foot again. And I'm also very interested to understand a little bit more of the roles that all of these different partners play. I mean, you've mentioned law enforcement, and parole and probation, and, you know, community justice, behavioral health. And just, at some point, I would love to learn a little bit more about kind of the, each of those entities' roles, and kind of how you hand, how you hand a case or a person in need back and forth amongst you to provide them this, with this whole package of wraparound services to help them get back on track. That's, yeah, so if you have quick comment, you know, like some, if you can distill that down for me right now, I would love to hear a little bit more about it. But otherwise, you know, at some point in the future, I'd love to just kind of get walked through the process.
Commissioner Chang, you kind of hit on it when you said wraparound services. And so, you know, it is indeed a wraparound services from, you know, a lot of our participants who come in may have, you know, co-occurring disorders, meaning they have mental health disorders, as well as substance use disorders. And so, you know, treating them for their substance use disorder is one thing, but you also need to be able to treat their mental health. And, you know, many of the people who come in also have a distrust of law enforcement. And so, you know, community supervision is really important, because you begin to build a trust, along with community partners and law enforcement, probation, the Sheriff's Office. They provide resources to help to manage the individuals in the community. They only go and make home checks, and, you know, the goal here is not to put them into jail necessarily, but to treat their addiction, give them the tools to be able to function in the community. One of the things that we say is that when they come in, you know, many of these individuals do not have the life skills to function within the community. So, you know, they don't know how to time manage. They won't show up to meetings on time. And a lot of this is because of their substance use addiction. So we have to provide that to them. And so we have to show them a different way, and provide them the tools to function as a functioning member of society. And having law enforcement, and probation, and mental health services, and substance use disorder services, all help in that regard. And so it's a community effort. It takes them to trust community partners that are willing to help them. And so that's, you know, a breaking down of the process of longstanding issues that they may have, particularly with law enforcement. So, you know, when they, if they don't trust that when a police officer shows up, or the deputy shows up, that the deputy has his or her best interests at heart, they're not trying to cooperate. But what this program does, it really shows that there is community support for them. And one of the things that participants mention when they initially come through our Treatment Court is, when they hear our treatment providers, our probation officers stand up, our DHS representatives stand up, and provide a report about them that's positive. And it's something new to them, and it changes the way they think about community services. So you have people in the program, team members who are offering support, not, and not just verbally, but weekly, checking in on them, making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And if they've failed something, then we figure out a way to help them achieve that. That's kind of the wraparound services that we have. So it's a real true partnership on every level, and we're really grateful for all the things that our partners really offer to us.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So, yeah, keep us on the invitation list. We do have a direct conflict usually in the afternoons when the graduations are happening, but that's how it worked for me. I was able to just find an afternoon that we weren't meeting, and come join the graduation. So we'll keep that in play.
Thank you, and we really appreciate that. And I know Commissioner Chang, we'll see you soon. So, we don't take offense at all.
So is there a motion for submitting this grant?
I move that we approve the submittal of the grant for the Deschutes County Adult Treatment Court Grant Application, 2123 biennium.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you for your update. It's actually very encouraging.
And good luck with the grant.
Thank you. You guys have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trevor.
Next is item number 11, consideration of a Notice of Intent to Award Contract with Cody Smith from the Road Department.
Morning, everyone. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. So the Northeast Nigus Way, Northeast 17th Street Improvement Project includes a full depth of pavement reclamation, as well as widening of Northeast Nigus Way and Northeast 17th Street, the corridor between O'Neill Highway to the north and Maple Avenue to the south. The project also includes realignment of the intersection at Northeast Maple Avenue, as well as some other miscellaneous work. So the Road Department had advertised for bids for this project on May 5th. Bids were open on May 26th. Three bids were received. Before you this morning, is a Notice of Intent to Award Contract to Markham &amp; Sons LLC. to Markham &amp; Sons LLC in the amount of $2,192,235. Approval and posting of the notice of intent to award letter will begin a one-week protest period during which interested parties can submit protests regarding the contract award. If no protests are received, the contract will be awarded administratively. I'm anticipating the onsite work for this project will begin in early July. I'll note that segments of the corridor will be closed through traffic throughout the duration of the project. Traffic in and out of the Negus Transfer Station will certainly be maintained at all times as well as local traffic to residents that live within the project corridor. But otherwise, there will be some traffic impacts when this project starts up. We'll have more information going out in the media and posted out on the road as that, as those are coming up. This paid project will be all wrapped up by the end of this calendar year. Right now, our total project estimated cost is right at about $2.9 million. And with that, I'll pass it back to the board, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Cody. You answered a lot of questions there. When's it going to start? When's it going to end? And as someone who drove around there not too long ago, definitely I can see where this work is a good upgrade for Deschutes County.
Well, in acknowledging full-depth reclamation, that's fully grinding up the street down to its gravel base and then, you know, repaving a full road there. So that's going to be a nice road for many years to come after a process like this also.
Great, great project. Having driven around there a fair bit last year, I can definitely see the value of doing the major overhaul for that road.
It's a little bumpy.
A little bumpy.
It'll be smooth by the end of the summer. Well, and then the bids are all closed, which is pretty exciting. And, you know, right around that engineer's estimate also. So I think we have things dialed in pretty well here, and it's a competitive market, which is good to see.
So I move board chair's signature of document number 2021-046, a notice of intent to award the contract for Northeast Negus Way and the Northeast Seventeenth Street Improvement Project.
Second.
Did you mention board signature or chair?
I said board, I said chair. I said board chair.
Okay.
Board chair.
Confirming.
The chair of the board. Yeah, I should say the chair of the board.
Yep. Okay, with that clarification, any other discussion? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Cody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cody.
Item number 12, Consideration of Board Signature of Document Number, Document for Telecare Mental Health Services of Oregon. Kara Cronin.
Good morning, Commissioner Chang, DeBon and Adair. For the record, I am Kara Cronin. I'm a Behavioral Health Program Manager. And today, for your consideration, I'm presenting our contract with Telecare, which provides services at our secure residential treatment facility here in Deschutes County called Deschutes Recovery Center. This contract is pass-through money from Oregon Health Authority that we invoice as, to support indigent clients and some of our psychiatric security review board clients. And I am here to answer any questions you might have.
Great. So this is very much pass-through dollars for the existing service, 24-hour secure residential treatment facility, just acknowledging.
Correct.
Kara, I'm just wondering, since there's no beds available in the Oregon State Hospital, had they ever considered enlarging that facility? I see that we're limited to 16. You know, it just seems like, oh my gosh.
Great question. I'm actually in a meeting later today to talk about options for expanding, not this particular facility, because there's quite a bit of investment that would have to be done. But the state really has a lot of money and interest in expanding this level of secure residential treatment, because it is really dire out there with the state hospital being really closed the majority of this year. So I think there's some funding at the state for it. I'm not sure that this facility can be expanded, but we are actively looking for other options, both in Deschutes County and around the state, to expand this for clients in need.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm glad that that's what your afternoon agenda is.
Yep, there you go. Good question.
I would definitely think there was a need.
Can you, can you give me a little bit of a sense of where, where the beds, like, in total, where are the beds? And how many are there for people from our community who need these, need this kind of residential service?
There are secure residential facilities across the state. I actually don't know how many beds. I know that we have no beds at the state hospital. So, secure residential treatment is, they'd really increase their acuity of clients as no one's going to the state hospital. These are people who really have been civilly committed or are under the psychiatric security review board. So I can't give you an actual number of how many beds like this that are across the states, across the state. I really apologize I could get you that information.
No, no, and I guess I'm, you know, I don't necessarily need to know where all the beds are across the state. But with, the beds that we, that we might use or we might have access to from Deschutes County, is it, I mean, can you send someone from Deschutes County anywhere in the state? Or, okay.
Yeah, you can. So we try and keep people local whenever possible, but we do send referrals out to other facilities like this across the state.
Are there, are there some that we typically use? Or really, any week?
Most of the clients at DRC, this facility, are our, we're the county of responsibility.
Okay. And so we'll, we'll try to make maximum use of, of the recovery center first and then, and then go out, go outside community as needed?
Absolutely. We work really closely with Telecare, and we are approvers of who get placed into this Deschutes Recovery Center.
Great.
It may have mentioned, mentioned this in here, but how long have we had this relationship with Telecare?
Oh, quite some time. The Deschutes Recovery Center has been around, I want to say, close to eight years, maybe a little bit longer. They're a really great partner to us. They also run two residential treatment homes, which is a lower level of care. Yeah, it's a really well-established, well-oiled relationship.
Well, and funding like this is the oil that makes it happen.
Yeah. And I can, can you, can you explain the structure around the recovery center to me a little bit more? So this is a facility that we, we own and we maintain? Is that, is that the way it works?
You're predating me a little bit. We, I think Deschutes County donated the land for the building of this facility. So we definitely had a partnership with Telecare. And the state put some seed money in to build this facility. So county donated land, state had some funding, and then Telecare brought funding as well. So that's sort of the genesis of this facility. Yeah, did that answer your question?
Some, and it looks like Tom might have a little bit more information.
Yes.
Commissioners, it is, does belong to the county. It's owned by the county. It's on county land. The original construction was financed through a bond, general, or a revenue bond. The grant payments from the state actually funneled to Telecare, the reason for the agreement this morning. But that payment also satisfies the debt, the annual debt each year. So that was the original arrangement that was set up. So we both pay Telecare for the, as a contractor, to run the facility. But we also pay off the debt each year through this same pot of money. And maintenance is sort of a shared responsibility, is my understanding. The Telecare does some internal sort of custodial maintenance. But we would take care of any external or, you know, sort of capital-type maintenance upkeep. We built a fence recently, within the last couple of years, a new higher fence around the facility, that sort of thing.
We saw it just last week on kind of our spreadsheet of outstanding debt issue.
Right, right. Yep, just, you know, as partnerships often are, kind of complex. It's helpful to understand all the, all the moving parts. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Okay, I move board signature of document number 2021-260, the Telecare Mental Health Services of Oregon contract.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much for the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And good luck this afternoon.
Thank you.
Sooner than later.
Yeah, there you go.
I mean, I do believe there is that need out there.
Thank you.
At this time, item number 13, Eligible Grantee for Community Dispute Resolution Program. And we do have two other items for Laura after the COVID update. So we'll see if we can get through another one or something before the top of the hour.
All right. So for the record, Laura Skundrick, Administrative Analyst. Today, I'm here to talk first with you about selecting an eligible grantee for the Community Dispute Resolution Program. In February, the board passed Resolution 2021-008 stating the county's intent to participate in the Community Dispute Resolution Grant Program offered by the University of Oregon's Office for Community Dispute Resolution. We then announced the application process and made the application available to those interested. That application window closed April 30th, and we received one application that was from Community Solutions of Central Oregon. So the U of O Office of Community Dispute Resolution then reviewed the application for eligibility and notified us that Community Solutions is eligible to receive these funds. The final grant amounts are subject to authorization and appropriation from the Oregon Legislative Assembly for the 2021 to 2023 biennium. So our next step would be for Deschutes County to select a grant recipient and notify the Office for Community Dispute Resolution. So today, I'm seeking direction whether the board would like to select Community Solutions as the eligible grantee to receive the Oregon Office for Community Dispute Resolution funds. And I'm happy to answer any questions if needed.
Any questions or thoughts?
I know, I remember they've been in the room in the past. So I'm sorry that they're not here today, but yes.
But I remember there was a request for a letter of support for Community Solutions of Central Oregon to me months ago. And we are in a spot where we're, we're selecting an applicant to us. So, you know, I was in that catch 22 where these, this is an organization, provides this service, and they do a great job, and we have the relationship. But this is that point where the grant's coming to us, and we're selecting and advocating. Now we can start to advocate for the specific applicant. But there could have been more than one applicant. So that was where we were at a few months ago when I heard about this.
Right. My, I was curious what kind of disputes they're working to help resolve? You know, who the, who the, you know, yeah, what kind of disputes? Who are the parties? And is this, are they providing these services all within Deschutes County or?
That is correct. They do provide them in Deschutes, Kirk, and Jefferson Counties. Those counties historically have not opted into the program. So the selection is then made by the University of Oregon School of Law. And they have been providing those services for going on 24 years now for those three counties. So in their application, they did provide the benchmarks for the services that they provide in the programs, which I'm happy to share.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't catch that from the letters.
Yeah, we have the University of Oregon side of this.
Okay.
And now, looks like we'll get, yeah, more information.
So you can see on page five here, special services starts with their programming. We can go over those if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can see they provide mediation training, mediation services, educational trainings, and then publicity and related outreach activities.
Commissioners, I would also add that they serve a vital function with our Justice Court in mediating civil disputes and resolving them prior to them showing up as a civil claims trial in Justice Court. So they are a tremendous benefit to our Justice Court Department in, in being efficient in the processing of those claims.
So having this just provided to us right now, one of my thoughts is maybe want to study this a little more and bring it back this afternoon if you want to be able to read this document. Because I don't know that we had this, this application available to us as part of this.
I mean, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a true believer in, in alternative dispute resolution approaches. And I just, I just wasn't quite sure where, you know, from the materials, where and what, what kind of disputes were being, were being addressed. So with this information, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Sure, okay. So, and I have history with this. We've done this a few times over the years. Mr. Winterstein has been in here to talk about it. And there's some, I don't know the terminology for the folks that do the dispute resolution, their, their position. But there's some wonderful volunteers and participants in this program that provide this service to the community.
So should I make a motion?
Sure. All right, yeah.
Okay. Yes, we need to select Community Solutions as our eligible grantee to receive the Oregon Office for Community Dispute Resolutions funding for the year 21, 2021 to 2023.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, thank you.
Maybe Gary will come in later and maybe give us a little, that would be great. Invite him to come in.
Yep. We've had, yeah, work session type updates about the, the work they're doing and who's involved.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
So we do have 10 more minutes, two items after the COVID update. Let's get, step to the next one if, if you're ready, so.
Absolutely.
So this would be a spay and neuter grant program for 2021.
So our Deschutes County Dog License and Pet Identification Application do provide residents the ability to make a voluntary donation to support spay and neuter services in our county. These donations are and have been typically supplemented by general fund and then offered to local nonprofits who provide those spay and neuter services in Deschutes County. So today, I am seeking board direction on whether you would like to offer that spay and neuter program, grant program this year, and if so, the total amount you would like to offer. So the current balance of the dog license donation fund has increased slightly since this report. It is now at $5,568.49. So depending on the total grant award you offer, it would then be supplemented with general fund.
So this effort starts the process of a solicitation.
That's right.
And we're setting the dollar amount by, is there support for subsidizing with general fund to get it to some?
Definitely. Aren't we known as Deschutes County Dog Capital of the World?
There you go.
And a lot of our, I know that the veterans were so appreciative last year of receiving, I think they received the largest award from this program. And a lot of veterans have animals that need attention. So I think it's really important.
Veterinarians for veterans.
Yes.
At the end.
Yeah, that's how it worked.
Yep.
So anyway, no, at least I think we should go up to the 10,000. I don't know if you, if there's support for more, but I think that should be our minimum.
I would support that. I'm curious, of the people who get dog licenses, do we, do we have a sense of what percentage of them make this kind of voluntary additional contribution?
I don't, but I am happy to find that out.
I mean, one, you know, one, one potential thought or, you know, idea? I mean, one, you know, one, one potential thought or, you know, idea or, or would be, you know, converting it, if we, if, if, if it's just a very small number of kind-hearted licensed applicants who are supporting this, you know, like another way to think about structuring it would be to, you know, just increase the general fee overall for everyone and set aside a, a portion of those dollars for, you know, for this purpose, I don't.
I do believe that many times it is due to people kind of rounding up, so they just kind of donate the extra little bit, so I.
Less than a dollar amount, whatever it is, yeah.
Right, right. So, if we, if we charged everybody like an extra 50 cents, I mean, would it, would it generate a lot more money for us to be able to support this, you know, very important function? I mean, this is, when I, when I was first reading this, I, I started thinking about noxious weeds and how, you know, how it takes all, you know, a broad community approach to, to address that, but, you know, noxious weeds have, have impacts, but, you know, feral cats and dogs have, can have much more severe impacts in, in the community, and it seems like a, an effort that, you know, deserves to, deserves to have dedicated funding.
Well, and I, so I would possibly propose we go higher, you know, so the, the total amount in the end is higher than $10,000. I'm thinking this is a great opportunity, a post-COVID, or, you know, after a year of, of a worldwide pandemic, a lot of new residents, new people, housing's changed over in support of just the, the, you know, the economy coming back, you know, maybe $10,000 is a minimal amount.
And when you look at.
Get a little bit more, yeah.
Yeah, you look at the history, that actually the donations have gone up almost $1,000 from 2015, 16, so, I mean, from the community and the, I, I would agree with you.
So, we've seen.
Go back up to the 13 or the 12, five.
Yep.
I would support that.
Yeah, so let's do 13,000, which is whatever the difference is.
Right, I think that's.
In support of these efforts, yeah.
I think that's really important, as the proud owner of, what is it, two dogs and three cats.
Well, and when you were talking about possibly raising the fee, there was a moment that, as a reminder, so, one of our budget committee members, Mike Meyer, every year, and he didn't do it this year, that's what I was giggling about almost.
Okay.
He mentions a pet tax, and he wants to go to the state legislature and get a, a small pet tax on all pet food, and he's mentioned that every year, and he, he didn't mention it this year, that's why.
He was concerned with the park this year.
Yeah, exactly, different topic, but it's, you know, it usually comes up in passing in the budget committee meetings, so.
So, do we need a vote?
That idea makes sense, too.
Well, he was just, that's one of his things that he promotes.
So, I, I move that we have the total amount offered this year to be 13,000 for the 2021 spay and neuter grant program.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
Great, thank you.
So, we'll see if.
So, we'll publish a news release, opening up that application for about probably two and a half weeks or so, is what we've done historically, and then the Dog Control Board of Supervisors will review those applications, and I'll bring back a recommendation to you.
Right.
One more question, Laura. So, in the past, have there been, have there been groups that applied for these funds who didn't get them?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Based on what I've seen.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, it's just dividing it up by the people.
Right.
Because these dollars could also be matched, or, you know, if they're either voucher system or there's different ideas about how they could be used, so, yeah, it gets pretty creative.
Right, I just wanted to make sure there weren't like, you know, a whole bunch of applicants and, and, you know, just a few of them getting grants.
Understood.
Thank you.
So, we'll see after the COVID update for the next item, thank you. So, at this time, item number 14, COVID-19 update, and we will work our way into a Facebook Live and interpreter, and welcome our staff to have this discussion today.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm George Conway, the Bill Services Director. I want to introduce Molly Wells Darling, who's our incident commander for the COVID response, and then also our presenter today will be Emily Freeland. She's a registered senior environmental health specialist and is currently serving as the Operations Section Chief for COVID Response. Who are you, Emily?
Thanks, Dr. Conway, and thanks for having us this morning for this COVID-19 update. Number, I don't even know how many for you all, but hopefully winding down on these with this every-other-week kind of section. So, we're gonna just start off, whoops, uh-oh.
We see the main slide, the first slide at this time.
Okay.
Here we go.
Can you see the next one? Okay, perfect. So, we're gonna start off with some great news, and probably some of you have seen this driving around town, there's a nice big billboard. COVID-19 vaccinations are working, so although we've had a pretty high number of hospitalizations in our county, 97% of the patients had not been fully vaccinated, so that means that they were still at higher risk for COVID-19 infection and serious illness. So, it's good news, bad news with the high numbers, but also that the vaccine is working. We really want to encourage members of our community to get the shot, it is your turn. So, there was a lot of confusion early on about how do we get the shot, where can we get it, and we know now that everyone 12 and older is eligible to get the vaccine with some very, very small caveats to that, if you can't get it for medical reasons, and it's widely available in our community. So, every, every town in Deschutes County, there is availability, whether that's through pharmacies, primary care clinics, or pop-up or regular clinics that we're staffing. So, it is your turn, go ahead and, and get the shot. So, our COVID-19 numbers for this week, we have another, another week of good news. Last week, we had 120 cases, which was down by about half from the week prior to that, so I would say this makes us very cautiously optimistic. You know, we're still very concerned that there are gonna be some more peaks and valleys, although we don't want to see those big mountain peaks like we have around here. When the virus is getting into populations that have lower vaccination rates, we see those kind of spot fires pop up, and they can be hard to put out if people are not taking proper steps to protect themselves by making those health choices for themselves and their, their, you know, local communities, whether that's your workplace or your faith-based community, you know, those infections can spread rapidly. So, good news that our numbers are going down, but we still expect that we'll see some, some more peaks coming up, hopefully not that big. So, we do want to encourage testing, we have free COVID testing events throughout the month of June, we have one again tomorrow, right out on the Wall Street building, right in front of where you all are sitting today, it's a weekly event, so the 10th, the 17th, and the 24th, and then we have a newer partnership with COCC in Redmond, and we're having an evening, going into the evening testing event in Redmond on the 15th and 29th, to hopefully provide the opportunity for members of the community in Redmond to be able to get that free quest, test. These are no questions asked, you can show up, it's drive-through, it's relatively painless, nasal swab and in-and-out kind of situations. So, the next bit of data we want to report on is our vaccinations by age group, and so I think you've seen a similar chart. Basically, our 70 to 79-year-olds have a very, very high rate of vaccination with almost, you know, 98.4% vaccinated, and then that moves down. You know, this is probably for many different reasons, we know that older adults are much more at risk, but also younger people, the 12 to 15-year-olds have only been eligible for the vaccine for a short time, and we're doing really well, actually, in that demographic with about 30% of those younger children in process for their vaccination. So, you can see that a large, the dark blue bar is in process, and then the light blue is fully vaccinated, so that's the two weeks past your second dose. Whoops, oh my gosh, sorry. Okay, so, basically inverse to that, we see the weekly case rate by age group, and this is per 10,000 in population. We see much higher numbers in our younger populations with that going down. We are happy that this week you can see the 16 to 19-year-olds, our, our case rates for that age demographic have dropped off significantly, and we hope that that continues, although with many activities going on in this time period with parties, graduation parties, lots of activities for that age group, that possibly could go up again, depending on, you know, what happens. So, the next, our next bit of information is our test results by week, so we have leveled off at about 3,000 tests being administered last week, but the positivity rate has also been going down, so we're a little under four or 5% positivity rate. So, often people, I think, are, are leery to get tested, and we're seeing that with our numbers dropping off, but we really want to encourage people to go and get tested if you're feeling any symptoms at all, or if you think you may have been exposed. You know, making informed decisions are really important, and this is how we can do it, if you go and get a test. You know, some people feel like, oh, no news is good news if I'm just going along in life, but you could inadvertently continue to spread this with those mild symptoms, or if you've had an exposure. So, this, the best window is about six to nine days after you've been exposed to get tested, that's the most accurate time to be tested, especially if you're asymptomatic. But in addition to that, we want to go over this again, where we're still seeing a lot of people come, become positive, who, when they first started exhibiting symptoms, they were very minor, and they thought they were having allergies or just a minor cold, but then over a few days' time, the symptoms get worse, they go and get tested, the test is positive, and by that point, they've already gone to a party or exposed, you know, friends and family, and maybe they don't get horribly sick, but then some of their friends and family do. So, it's really important to be able to, you know, go get tested as soon as you feel symptomatic at all, and then you can make those informed decisions moving forward. Do I stay home and not go to this graduation party, or am I able to do that feeling confident that these are allergy symptoms, and when I take my allergy pill, it'll go away? So, hospitalization counts are also decreasing, which is great news for, for our community so that we all can get the care that we need, whether we get sick with COVID or, you know, go hiking and, you know, break our leg or fall down or have some other kind of accident, that those services are available no matter what kind of medical care we need. But numbers are not the only part of the story, so the average length of stay is also important here, and we want to just remember, remind people that the hospitalized patient in 2019, the average length of stay was about four days. With COVID-19, if you are hospitalized, your average length of stay is about seven days, which affects our capacity, and then the average length of stay for someone who is hospitalized with COVID-19 is over 15 days. So, this also, you know, affects the hospital's ability to care for people that are coming in with other medical conditions. So, along the vaccination note, our population is at about 60, 66.6% of vaccinated, this is for people that are over 16. So, you know, we talk often about 70% vaccination may bring us some sort of herd immunity, but we want to make sure and note that this is much lower than that for the total population, and that's what it would take to get that kind of herd immunity. So, this is only of eligible people 16 and older, we're doing really well, you can see we're in this dark blue kind of color here, but we still have a long ways to go if we think about herd immunity, and there's really a different type of risk for those that are non-vaccinated and those that are vaccinated. So, OHA, the Oregon Health Authority, really has come out with some things to know this week, and this just kind of echoes what we've been trying to say. In May, 98% of COVID-19 cases and nine in 10 COVID-related deaths occurred among people who were not vaccinated or who had not completed their vaccinations. So, we know that restrictions are lifting, and it's good news for our businesses and our communities, and we all want to get back to normal. I can't tell you, I mean, I know that the community is sick of dealing with COVID-19, but I think I am sick of hearing myself talk about this as well. We, we know that there, you know, if you're not vaccinated, you're still at high risk. If you choose not to be vaccinated, you can still make wise decisions to help protect yourself and your community members by getting tested, but we would really encourage people to go ahead and get that vaccine. There shouldn't really be any access issues, and if there are, we have resources to help meet those needs. Vaccinations remain the safest and the most effective way to protect yourself, and they are available for anyone 12 and up. So, I think probably most people have heard that when we get to 70% vaccinated, we are moving out of the risk system that we're currently in, so Deschutes County is still in that low-risk category with over 65% of our population vaccinated, which still has some restrictions on businesses, about 50% capacity for restaurants and those kind of things, which will move out of that risk system once we get to 70%. So, in Oregon, we need about 97,000 people more to become vaccinated, at least with their series in progress for this, for this kind of system to go away. So, in order to encourage that, the state is offering one, $1 million prize, and then in Deschutes County, one person will win $10,000, and then five people ages 12 to 17 will win $100,000 scholarships, and this is automatically entered if you receive your vaccine by June 27th. So, like I mentioned before, there are many, many, many vaccination options, but no matter where you go, it is free, no insurance is required, and there should be no ID required. You can find out all the many, many different options if you go to our website, centraloregoncovidvaccine.com. You can see here that, you know, our providers and clinics are listed, local pharmacies, there is, there is information there about how to get it. I know when I've been in the grocery store lately, over the intercom, I'll hear, you know, come now to the pharmacy and get your COVID-19 vaccination, so it is available, you can pretty much walk in and find it in your community wherever you are. And then we also are having pop-up clinics, so if you go down here to the Deschutes County logo, you can find all the information about all the different pop-up clinics that we're, you know, we're having. So, for example, today, there's one at the downtown library this afternoon, where you can walk in, no questions asked, and go ahead and get your vaccine. So, we also have many partners, including COPA and Mosaic Medical, who the pediatricians have gotten together and are having these youth vaccination clinics that are specifically geared toward vaccinating youth 12 to 18. 12- to 14-year-olds do need to come with a parent to be able to get their vaccination at these clinics, but there's lots of options for those as well. So, if there are frequently asked questions, you can find a lot of information on our website, you can email us with specific questions, and we do get back to you relatively quickly, and then we have the vaccine hotline. So, this hotline can help scheduling, it can help, you know, any kind of issues that you're having with getting your vaccine, questions about the vaccine, they may not be able to answer every question, but they certainly do refer people, and, and they find the answers that you will need as a community. On the 14th, they'll be going to new hours, so those are Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00, and that is staffed with, you know, really knowledgeable people who can point you in the right direction. So, any questions?
This is Commissioner Adair, I actually was contacted by a resident who had called the hotline number and didn't get an answer, I'm hoping he knew, it was during the proper time, did get him, you know, did find out where he could get his J&amp;J shot, but I just wondered, so they still will be answering that phone?
Yep, they're still answering the phone, and we are staffed, and you should be able to leave a message if, if every, you know, every person is on the line with someone else. Any other questions or anything we can help fill in? Dr. Conway, did I, did I miss anything major?
I had a few questions.
Okay.
One question was, so, do you have a sense of how many, how many people are getting vaccinated, or how many doses per week we're seeing in Deschutes County at this point? I, I sense that we're, we're still making progress, we're up to 67% now, but, you know, it, it does seem like things are slowing down?
Yeah, so, things certainly are slowing down, and Molly might have some more information on this. I think last week, we gave 1,800 prime doses, so that's that first dose. So that's that first dose, and then I think there were about a thousand second doses. So we're still doing really good on our second doses and getting people in for that full vaccination. I think we're only about three percent of people are not coming back for their second dose. Um, but yeah, last week we were eighteen hundred for that first dose, um, kind of number.
Still a good number. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pleasantly surprised. I think some of our clinics, we've been very pleasantly surprised at the number of folks that are still showing up to get vaccinated. And that just shows us that there is um, demand there, and now that we're in all of the communities, people will hopefully continue to get their vaccine and and protect themselves.
So, uh, Commissioner, we're uh, also considering or contemplating a series of incentives, and I believe that uh, uh, Nahad Sodaro Zodi did send a draft um, background information yesterday. So we'll look forward to discussing that next week. And I do want to, there is one other thing I do want to point out um, that I shared or that we shared with Commissioner Debone, Chair Debone yesterday. And that is that we're, we're in the process, uh, given the relatively high vaccination rate, our success in that, and that we are finally actually now have diminishing numbers of cases, although they're still concerningly high. We're in the process of winding down our incident command system and migrating those back toward the traditional structures. So I, I want to acknowledge that uh, health services folks and people from other departments, particularly Sergeant Nathan Garabey from the uh, Sheriff's Department, and many other, many other folks from other departments, and many other organizations have uh, leapt in to help over very protracted periods of time, helped us to uh, cooperate the mass vaccination uh, um, operations at the fairgrounds, and we're still working with many, many partners. So I do want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge that this was some hardship for people that were staying at their normal jobs in health services because they had to handle a sometimes heavier caseload because of the, the COVID um, issues, as well as often covering people that were off detailed ICS. So it's been a inherently uh, very uh, arduous exercise, uh, and I think that it's, it's been very successful and helpful. We appreciate the your support commissioners for this, uh, but we're starting to unpack that and the working parts, and the majority of them will go back to their traditional uh, place in the, in the public health service area.
Good to understand.
Well, and I'll acknowledge that, uh, you know, this is something that I've been able to share with the media and the governor, and, you know, how did Deschutes County do it? Uh, referring to our mass vaccination clinic, but the response countywide in the public health of everybody in the county. And putting up an incident command structure in the Health Department for this is uh, uh, something we practice a little bit because of wildfires. Uh, but this has been uh, in and under the uh, command at the Health Department. So uh, it's, I will say, it's just been a great example of partnership and people going above and beyond uh, this whole year um, for managing this worldwide pandemic. So a lot of uh, thank you to the whole organization and all the community members, but I mean, the organization, the people that were working in a whole different area, trying to support these efforts uh, this whole year. So thank you for acknowledging this is that time we're switching from the incident structure back to, you know, added capacity in the health, but uh, you know, kind of back out of a incident management command system.
Yes, and, and uh, Dr. Conway, the, a- as, you know, as these efforts are, are but, you know, disaggregating and going, and people are going back to their, to their regular jobs and, you know, the mass vaccination clinic wound down and things like that. I hope that uh, people are taking time to um, recog-, you know, uh, that, that, that they're, that we are taking pauses to recognize the incredible efforts that, that people have made. And um, I hope that uh, health services will share with the Board of Commissioners ways that we can help to, to recognize the work that everyone has done. Um, the incredible work that, that so many people have done in the last year and year and a chunk uh, during this pandemic. Um, and I, I did have, uh, I, I had a couple of other questions. Um, uh, one of them was about those uh, the incentive opportunities, and um, if we are going to every other week uh, updates, then uh, you know, maybe uh, you could just take a quick moment right now to share some of the uh, you know, initial thoughts or your, your um, best recommendations on how we provide incentives of to, for our community to get vaccinated. I know that the state has provided some funding um, to, to support those efforts, and I'm, I'm just guessing that if anyone out there is watching, that they might be curious about what that's going to look like, and it'd be nice for them to know more than, you know, today, or get a sense of it today rather than waiting for two weeks.
Yes, Commissioner. Actually, uh, they shouldn't have to wait for two weeks. Uh, what we're going to go to every other week, COVID updates. But what you received, I believe, last evening, is a draft staff report uh, for basically uh, an item uh, in next week's uh, commission meeting on Wednesday describing these. However, I think, I see that our Public Health Director uh, is on. So Nahad, if you want to give sort of a brief overview or even, even a slide?
Yeah, thanks, George. Either me or Molly, um, maybe, uh, because Molly's, uh, Molly and Molly's team have worked so hard on the equity plan that we submitted as one of the very, very few counties a few weeks ago, uh, which made us eligible to then go into the lower risk category. And subsequent to that, we received funding specific to rolling out that equity plan. So we have made public commitment to our community and to the state on how we're going to roll out this effort. Uh, and as part of that draft plan, we have looked both at the supply access and access side, as well as the demand and motivation incentive side. So maybe Molly, um, uh, you could say a few words in terms of some of the suggested um, incentives uh, which might drive demand for uh, vaccine uptake?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. Uh, so we have four suggestions right now, um, and we're certainly open to suggestions from uh, the commissioners as well. Um, the first suggestion is um, something that we're titling right now as Bite Out of COVID, and that is essentially working with um, the different uh, cities in the county to provide incentives in terms of tokens that uh, individuals would get. So if a person went in and received a vaccine, they would get a token for like a ten dollars off um, any business that opts into this. Um, so they would then take that token to whatever business on the list that has opted into the program and give that token to the program and receive the ten dollars off of whatever that service might be, or uh, meal, or, or whatever that uh, particular business provides. Um, the reason that we like this is that uh, one, it does help with uh, incentives for our community, but it also gives back to our businesses um, who we know have been struggling uh, throughout, uh, throughout this pandemic. So that is uh, one option that we'll be presenting next week. Another is uh, like what the, what the State of Oregon is doing and like what Jefferson County is doing in terms of the, the larger raffle items. So um, some larger um, monetary um, uh, raffle items that would go out to the community, and we will either do that through the state um, in their lottery system or, or through our own. And then we have, um, we will be recommending uh, basically what we call Party at a Pod, but uh, essentially what that is, is um, music, food, uh, non-alcoholic beverages for people to come to our vaccine events. So this is um, especially helpful with our Latinx population. Um, we have these um, parties that will bring people in. We can provide education. We can talk about vaccine confidence. And then also um, provide those same things at uh, our uh, our vaccination clinics. We're also collaborating with other clinics and other services uh, in the area to um, have services at those, at those vaccination clinics. So for instance, we'll be doing the vaccination clinic at Saint Francis Church, well, where we will have food and um, non-alcoholic beverages. And then also we will have services there, so people can enroll in different services if they, if they would like to do that. Um, and then finally, we are looking at um, some, uh, an incentive program uh, for our businesses. Um, in, with the hope that we can get our businesses to um, really increase um, encouragement of their staff to come and get vaccines. So um, we definitely want to um, work with the commissioners on what that incentive program might look like for, for our businesses. Uh, but that will be our fourth recommendation. So those are the four, four buckets of recommendations for incentives.
And Molly, if I may just add that um, uh, what we're seeing, uh, I mean, there is not a whole literature necessarily around COVID vaccination incentives, right? We have the literature around, uh, obviously even from the field of economics around uh, how incentives influence behaviors. Now, we do have some empirical evidence from um, Ohio, where, uh, as you know, is where I was raised, um, and that's why I'm a Buckeye fan. Uh, we do have some um, uh, evidence from Ohio where it indicates that since they have put in um, some of these gimmicks in place, um, and incentive programs in place, it has helped quite a bit in terms of increasing vaccination rates, especially in particular age groups. So um, we do think that there is some empirical evidence that will substantiate some of our proposals.
But Nahad, when you win a million dollars, then you'll stop working, and we're desperate for employees here. Um, I have a question because you, the token idea, the two hundred thousand, so you're, you're trying to reach twenty thousand people there with that ten-dollar token. You didn't actually give us the number of our vaccinated. You only gave us a percentage this week, and I'm wondering, how many people have been vaccinated? So where are we going to hit, you know, that seventy percent? How many people are we short in Deschutes County? Molly, do you know those numbers?
Um, so we don't actually in Deschutes County have to hit that seventy percent. That is a state goal. So we have already reached our uh, sixty-five percent to be in lower risk. And then in order to get to um, everything opening up uh, without um, the risk stratification, et cetera, that's actually an overall state goal for um, seventy percent. So the, go ahead, George.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Please finish.
Um, in turn, so in turn, I would have to look and see in terms of us hitting seventy percent, um, because I haven't, I haven't looked at that number. I believe Nahad, we, I saw.
Actually, Molly, actually, it's good to pivot to the equity plan and the target that's stipulated in the equity plan, because that's part of this discussion. So what's that figure and what are the numbers behind that? So eighty percent is what's basically um, uh, stipulated by the state uh, of the eligible population over twelve, and we are around twenty-one thousand shy of that number.
And the eligible population, so the state changed this a little bit recently and moved that to eighteen plus. Um, I'm sorry, that's for the, that's for the overall seventy percent for the state. So yes, Nahad's correct. Over twelve, um, receiving one shot to meet eighty percent is what our, our equity plan um, indicates, and that's um, the request from the state, and so it's about twenty-one thousand.
Okay, so that's where you came up with the two hundred thousand then, um, to get those twenty-one thousand people to get in and get their vaccinations.
Yes, Commissioner, I do want to add though that the, the aspiration number to be vaccinated is everyone. Uh, short of just a few medical exceptions. Uh, we anticipate having some form of what we call functional herd immunity. We hit about eighty percent, but that's, that's eighty percent of everyone. We don't have the child vaccine yet. Um, so the best thing is for everyone to protect themselves and their family. There are certain people that are immunosuppressed that either may not get the vaccine or may not have a good response. So there are a few exceptions, but the, the aspiration is that uh, basically everyone will, will go and get a vaccine.
And hearing, and hearing that we, we got eighteen hundred prime doses into people's arms last week is, that, that makes me feel a little better. Um, I, 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 I kind of wanted to piggyback off of that discussion and, and uh, ask about um, uh, if, if we have any kind of a sense of how many people have antibodies via the other route, uh, having been infected and had COVID um, in, in our community. I, I mean, we, we look at our vaccination numbers, um, we look at, I, I mean, I know that there have been, you know, uh, ten, what, ten thousand people in, in Deschutes County who've had COVID and, and probably more since there have been people who were asymptomatic. Do we, do we have um, uh, do we have any kind of a sense of uh, how many people might have antibodies uh, because of infection in our community?
The Commissioner, the best answer is no. Um, there have been multiple attempts to do some cross-sectional antibody assays across the state, including small samples in Deschutes County. But as you mentioned, we do know that uh, it'll right around five percent of the population have had uh, reported COVID infections. Uh, it's very reasonable to assume that it's higher than that. Uh, we also know that there is some, in addition to the case numbers, we know there's persistence of uh, uh, signal in wastewater, so there, there are still a substantial number of new infections as well. We're also cautious about making such estimates because we are finding that there's some reluctance to uh, bully, pass along uh, information about people that may have been exposed of because of people's reluctance about that they may not be able to report to work, et cetera. So I think it's, it's uh, if you will, safe to assume that the five percent would be a substantial underestimate. The other issue with antibody is you have to have uh, cutoffs and thresholds. So people that may have been infected, say, a year ago, may not have adequate, what we would call tighter uh, to show that. So it's, it's, it's actually a surprisingly complicated and, and difficult to answer question. But we do know that there's been very substantial amount of COVID in the community, and that some people will have uh, natural antibodies. However, even if you have natural antibodies, as long as the course of your infection is over, plus a short washout period, it's better to go ahead and get the vaccine as well, because then you'll have a more durable and broader uh, immune response, and it may activate, more effectively activate both your antibody production, which is done by what we call our B cells, as well as the T cell, which is the sort of killer function to uh, deal with new viruses that might be introduced to you. So, so uh, there's no reason that people that have had COVID that are no longer symptomatic should be dissuaded from also getting uh, vaccinated so that they'll have a, a more durable protection.
Thank you.
Okay, so good discussion. Uh, the next week is, uh, is going to be a proposed item for the discussion that was talked about, and that's basically the plan for the rest of the year is what, the way I'm seeing it. And uh, you know, uh, distribution or utilization of funding provided by the state for our equity plan also. Uh, so that'll be next week's discussion. And uh, one of my observations, I think the big takeaway today is it's your turn. Uh, you know, it's available. Uh, vaccine's available all over the place. You know, it was mentioned that uh, when you're shopping at some of the large stores, it'll be on the intercom, you know, come get your vaccine. So it, it is truly available right now. So message of the day, it's your turn.
If I could ask one more question, um, so we know that the world will change when statewide vaccination rates reach seventy percent. Do we have any uh, any better sense today of, of when that might be, uh, you know, based on the, the rates of people uh, going in to get vaccinated around the state? Um, I, you know, again, hearing that we had eighteen hundred prime doses last week is, is encouraging both at the community level, but also at the state level.
Yeah, the state is um, predicting uh, hopefully by June twenty-first that we would meet that based on getting about uh, one percent uh, uh, per week, I think, or one percent per day, I'm sorry. Um, and, but I think, you know, it remains to be seen in terms of how many people come out and get vaccinated. So probably between June twenty-first and uh, the beginning of July, the first week of July, is what they're saying.
Well, and I, I do want to emphasize that, that these decisions, including the risk categorization, whatnot, are, are modulated by uh, basically political and media environment. So in the long run, I'm hoping that much more people will be vaccinated than that, so that we have a durable and effectively protected population.
Good call.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll see you again next week for an agenda item and not specifically a COVID update, but I'm sure we'll bring up whatever we need to at the time.
And those 120, what a great count last week. So that was really nice to see.
Here we go.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. So we were able to do item number 15 right before 14. We were on roll, so at this time, item 16, but also possible discussion about getting to the items for the afternoon session. I was just notified that our public hearing for Guest Ranch and Title 17 amendments was notified for 9:00 AM, and we're just have the opportunity being 10:30 AM to possibly do the next two items that were going to be for after lunch.
That would be excellent.
And be done for the day.
Because I have a meeting with Tina Nickel.
Well, there you go.
I know, and you know, anyway, I know.
So let's, I see Tom maybe stepping back in the room. So Tom, we were able to have a discussion just now that there is support for bringing both items, 17 and 18, to before the lunch hour and, you know, get through the complete agenda for the day before the, or it'll be before adjourning before lunch. So if you can help with that. So Nathan Garabee and also Brandon Herman would be the notifications. Thank you. So item number 16, video lottery allocation follow-up, new project support. Laura.
Thank you. So during the board's April 7th video lottery allocation exercise, commissioners indicated interest in providing funding for additional projects or organizations and included $60,000 in the fiscal year '22 video lottery funding to support this effort. So today, I'm seeking direction on how the board would like to formalize this effort and allocate those funds. You'll see in your meeting materials today that we have proposed several options for moving forward, and I'm happy to walk through those briefly with the board or answer any So starting the first option to allocate one-time special project funding support for fiscal year '22, there are several agencies that we do provide video lottery funding for that are not formal service partners currently. So examples of those would be Shop With The Cop program with the Sheriff's Office, as well as Sun River Area Chamber of Commerce. And those are discussed each year during the video lottery allocation process. There is existing framework for those, one-time payments that allow us to track the outcomes and set up payment plans for those.
So yeah, let me step in, just make sure we're all on the same page in the decision space today. So basically, we went through an exercise to put a spreadsheet together with the allocations. It's a very much policy-based decision for the Board of Commissioners, and thank you for your support getting through that. And there's a line item for $60,000. So I'm just acknowledging that Commissioner Chang mentioned, I, I have possible proposal for adding service partner. I think that, you know, so I'm looking at, you know, option C here, and I'm thinking maybe we want to work our way back from option C to B to A instead of the other way around. Because if there's advocacy for that specifically, that's kind of what got us here, is what I'm thinking. And I, we don't have the names maybe that we're bringing to the table today, but it's putting structure around.
I, I would like to mention my name, Friends of the Children.
Yeah, well, so there you go.
Okay, I just want to make a public announcement because I, if you all saw the news and heard the news, that program just received $6 million from the granddaughter of Les Schwab. Well, guess what? That money, those $6 million, are not staying in central Oregon. They are going elsewhere in the country to bring in more Friends of the Children programs where they aren't established. And I mean, the program is so outstanding. It's so helpful. In fact, someone I spoke to from Sisters, her two children are part of the program. She loves it and feels like it is so worthwhile. It's very expensive. They have someone, you know, stay with that student from K through graduation, and they really try continuity, college graduates, and, but that money is not staying here. So that was the first thing they told me. Yeah, so, because she said they had calls from people, oh, we don't have to give you any more money? And she goes, oh, we do. So, yeah, there was a little misconception of where that money was going to be, and it's, it's not staying here.
Well, and I think this boils down to the concept of a service partner, you know, mandated supportive service, you know, county initiative, which is, you know, something that is from the point of view of the county and impact in the community. So that's, it's the policy discussion right before the commitment. So, yeah, Commissioner Chang.
Okay, well, if we're naming, since we're naming names, I, I will mention that the, the two entity, the two groups that I had in mind when I, I raised the idea of adding service partners this year were the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative and the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project. And we've, we're all, at this point, very aware of the acute drought crisis that we're facing in the Deschutes Basin this year, and the, the water collaborative has really been at the, and, and the partners within the water collaborative have really been at the center of efforts to try to improve flexibility and move water around to, to where it's desperately needed within the basin. So I, I would say that that's a, a really compelling reason to continue to support or to increase our level of support for, for that group from, you know, minimal, you know, like zero financial commitment, but, you know, significant engagement to making a, you know, kind of a foundational financial contribution to that, to that organization. The Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project has, you know, this is, again, the entity that has managed to work with the Forest Service to get 120,000 acres of treatments implemented in a landscape that wraps around, around Sun River, the city of Bend, the city of Sisters, and Blackbeet Ranch over the last 11 years, which has already been proven, you know, in, in two cases in the Sisters area. Those treatments have helped to stop wildfires in their tracks from burning into subdivisions in the, in the Sisters community. So both very important efforts. When, when we, I raised the idea of, you know, new service partners earlier, they're, you know, understandably, that I think because we haven't added new service partners in a long time, there was a little bit of, you know, I, I think there was a little bit of concern or hesitancy about taking that big of a jump at this point. So I would, I would be very comfortable with considering those two groups for either, you know, option A, you know, special projects funding this year, or a, a new grant of some, some kind that's, you know, one-time with the, with the intention, I, I would hope we would have the intention, to consider those groups after, you know, we've, after they've been around the block for one year with us, to consider them as service partners next year. I, and we don't have to make the, jump all the way there this year, but I, that, that's kind of my long-term interest and would like to see us come out with something this year that, that supports taking that long-term look.
Well, so now I'm seeing, either, we might be done with this conversation if there's support for, you know, kind of the, the first steps here. That's interesting because as I say, I was, I was advocating for, you know, let's really think through what a service partner is and why we're doing a service partner. But if we're taking a step for just, you know, special project funding this fiscal year, or referring to a grant program, which means, and it doesn't sound like either one of those would be a grant program, because, you know, the water collaborative and the forest collaborative isn't, who else wants to do this? You know, it would be, it's kind of naming the names.
Right.
And I think we're in the same situation with Friends of the Children, as in, you know, maybe these are all special project funding for this year, and because, I mean, there's no statement about the future, but it sure can come around again.
Well, I really would like the Friends of the Children to be a service partner in the future. I think it's.
Well, and that's where I was, you know, do we want to have that service partner discussion in-depth today, or?
Or make some kind of a special.
Call 123 Special Done.
Or make some, make special project kind of allocations for this year and then consider next.
Yeah, and actually look at every, everyone that's been on that list for quite a while. I know I worked with the Deschutes County employee that was incredibly detail-oriented on what was happening, and I do believe that we should look at all of them that have been there for quite a while at some point in this year and, you know, and really make a decision before next year. If everybody should stay, you know, what, what kind of reports are we hearing from what they're doing?
Three-person board knows that next time this comes around, we're going to look at it with that kind of land.
Yeah, with it, I, I just think it's important.
Okay.
I'd support proceeding like that. I, I do think that if we want to add special requests, these three special requests for this year, or special projects for this year, we should have them come and give a presentation.
Oh, yeah.
The way that, you know, the, the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative already has done that, and it would be good to, you know, just in terms of due diligence to.
So I'm going to make a kind of a political statement about an observation to be discussed. So there was a, for the Oregon Forest Resource Institute, there was a press release from state legislature saying that, you know, it was a 32 to 27 vote, that OFRI probably isn't doing what they were meant to be doing. And that just looks, it, it looks like it's a divisive statement from, you know, so I don't know if you know what I'm referring to.
Oh, yeah.
And what, and that just backs me into the fact that, you know, forest collaborative and water collaborative. If we fill up a room with 10 people that are very focused on, we need to fix these water problems, and, but they start to turn against, like, you know, if the collaborative isn't successful because it becomes a one-sided effort, we end up with situations like this. It just looks like the state legislature, 32 to 27, said, you people are bad. And, you know, it's industry that was at the OFRI table, which, there's a different point of view. So as I say, I'm not answering a question for either of those collaboratives. I'm just saying, man, we've got to be careful when we're talking about collaborative.
Yeah, I, I would not compare either of these.
So you know what I was referring to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, this is, I, I would, I think that's an apples and oranges comparison, in my opinion. I mean.
But it's a path.
There, there have been, you know.
If that's not the culture of the group right now, it's a path that we need to watch out for.
I, I mean, honestly, the, the concept behind these two collaboratives are, are what immunizes us against a single interest domination of, of, of an issue and of some resources.
And let's hold on to that. That's exactly where I'm at, yeah.
So, yeah, so I, I guess what I'm saying is investing in these groups is actually the way not to get to a polarized dynamic like we're having, like we're seeing related to OFRI right now.
That's the vision. Because I, well, and OFRI probably started like that, too. That's, that's my observation.
No, I mean, you know, OFRI, the, the way that, the way that OFRI was, was structured, it was, it was meant to evaluate, it's, it's, it was designed to evaluate the, you know, the, the impacts and effects of, of, you know, harvesting operations and to help the, the public understand those. And, you know, as we're all aware, that, that is, there's a super politically charged issue, and it, it very hard to navigate. And, and so I do, I'm, I, I don't have, I don't have, I'm, I myself don't have an opinion on whether this was the right thing or the wrong thing to do with OFRI, but I do believe that the charter for OFRI was dramatically narrower than the charter for these collaborative community-based natural resource management efforts, which are, which are, are specifically designed to look at, you know, to address all the interests around the table around certain natural resource interests as opposed to, you know, OFRI was very, it was designed to be very narrowly focused, and, and that's part of what.
They're being told they're not doing what.
And that's part of what can get them into trouble. I mean, what they, one thing I will say about kind of the, the, that, that piece of legislation is the functions, the, the purposes that were put forward when OFRI was created, those aren't just going away. They're taking, you know, that, right or wrong, they're taking away certain responsibilities from OFRI and putting them into the Oregon Department of Forestry. And, you know, maybe they can do a better job and maybe not. I, you know, I'm, I'm not going to judge that, but.
Well, I'm just saying, that's why I, you know, preface this with this, it's just generally a parallel path, but it's like we're turning against an industry group, it kind of looks like, you know, it's like, aye.
Again, I mean, that, that, that's one way you can spin this. The other way you can spin it is that.
That's why it was a 32 to 27 vote, probably.
Right.
The other way you can spin it is that.
There are several ways you can spin it.
Yeah. So, yeah.
And, and, you know, and trust me, like, I've worked a lot with OFRI, and I, you know, I have very much appreciated some of the contributions that they've made to the world of forest management in the state. But I, I do, I do think that they, the way that they were designed, you know, set the, set the agency up to potentially be, you know, a lightning rod, and that's what we're seeing.
Okay, so then back to a collaborative generically, as I say, and I haven't been at the table, I've, I've had associations with everybody in the forest collaborative, and I have, and I've been in the tours, right? And we've been on the forest together, obviously. I just worry that it can be a, a honeypot for somebody that's going to hold on to some of these environmental issues. It's my life's mission. I'm here until the day I die to advocate for this. An industry who's like, hey, I just want to water my crops or process the wood, I will come to the meeting and we'll have a good discussion, but I got to go back to work. You know, so, and then there's, so then, you know, the two turns to six to eight to 10 people that are like, yeah, I am here, I am passionate, and I'm going to tell you what the answer is, and the other people need to get back to work. So I, I just worry that we're setting up an environment like that.
Well, that's why when you look at, okay, you know, like, kind of dig down into the details, the charter for the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project has two environmentalist seats and two industry seats. And, and so it is, those are the, those are the voting members of.
See, this is land use, environmentalist or somebody to advocate, I want a full-time job advocating for something, opposed to an industry person who's like, okay, I'm going to take time from my job to go get some balance in this world so that I can go back to work. So I'm just acknowledging that, you know, that happens.
In, in the past, Interfor, Quicksilver Contracting, other, other businesses, they participate in the collaborative because they understand that getting to agreement leads to both funding and economically viable approaches to managing the forest, which is what gets them to business. They are there because the collaborative represents a pathway for them to, to do the work that they are incorporated to do, to go out and, and do, and do restoration treatments on public lands, get paid for, you know, the, the good condition that they leave the land in, and get paid for the wood fiber that they take out. And that's, it, you know, the, the, the structure, you know, that, the structure is set up for, the structure is designed for industry to get what it needs out of the forest and out of the community, and then so that's.
Okay, I'd love to say something because I did grow up in Hepner, and we did have a mill there. The Kinzu Mill was there, and it's gone today. How many mills are gone in Oregon? How many things have burned up? How many trees have burned up? How many spotted owls have burned up because of all of our fires? So it's like somewhere we have lost, we need to get that balance back. I, I feel like when I say to people, the University of California did a study on how great it was to run cows on properties. Well, I think we have tourists running on our, in our forests in Deschutes County. I don't think we run many cows, but, you know, they do elsewhere in the state. And actually, when they run, they clear out the underbrush, and the fire is not such an incinerary as it can be when you, you don't clean it up. So here, I know it's critical, we've got to keep things cleaned, but when I think of all the mills that are gone, and now you look at what are we paying for our lumber? What has it gone up, like three times in the last 12 months or something? I mean, the prices, and of course, what does that do? It creates unaffordable houses because the housing costs are just, you know, tripling. It's, you know, so there's a whole story there. I appreciate what you're saying, but I do realize that, thinking how the Kinzu Mill has gone from Hepner, it's been gone for a long time, a lot of jobs, and I just see where you, you've got to thin the forest out, and, and we need that industry to thin it out, and we've got to get our lumber prices where it's, it's financially worthwhile to, to do the trees, and yet, you know, they're not going to clear it. You know, we know that is not the right thing to do. It's just like the people that were so upset out of Sisters when we were taking out 2,500 trees. Oh, my gosh, people were so upset. But when they actually did that work, whatever group contracted, they did a phenomenal job, and the forest looks so much healthier out there, so.
And that is exactly why we. And that is exactly why we need forest collaboratives like the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project. Without that group, the Deschutes Collaborative, the, the Deschutes National Forest would not be producing 40 to 50 million board feet of timber per year. We would not have the social license to go out and actively thin, mow, and then prescribe burn tens of thousands of acres per year on the Deschutes National Forest. So these, you know, the, if there is any, if you have any perception, any perception that the, that the Deschutes Collaborative is set up to stop active management of the forest, then you really need to spend some time with the steering committee of that group and get out in the field and see some of the work that's being done.
So it reminds me that we just need to get back to the basics of what, what it's, what the vision is and how we can work together. And, and how do we communicate with both sides? Because as I say, I, I'm, I'm a little bit just naturally resistant to think that this is the future. And I, and I mean, I'll say that because, you know, we're, you just mentioned the fact that, you know, we're able to, able to manage the forest and able to do this. Because what's the other option? We have litigation happening at the highest levels in the United States of America and it's going to go on forever. So, so then philosophically, do, would, does everybody agree that, oh, it's great to have litigation that goes on forever? So that, you know, it's starting with that concept, that, you know, so I'm just sharing.
Litigation is not, litigation is not the only reason that, that work has been gummed up on our national forests in the past few decades.
Let's acknowledge that this is a conversation that can be valuable if we can get through it, too. Because, you know, that's why, you know, I brought it up.
So litigation, you know, like, the existence of the National Environmental Policy Act and litigation that stems from that is something that has slowed down work on the national forests. The other thing that slowed down work on our national forests, particularly in places like this, dry forest systems where we have a lot of second growth, third growth, you know, areas that have been harvested, you know, they have been harvested a substantial number of times in, you know, over the past 100 years. There's not a whole lot of commercial value out there. And so you actually need to subsidize, you know, you, you need to subsidize whole treatments, you know, because the prescribed burning, the brush mowing, the non-commercial thinning, those cost money. And there's not enough commercial value to cover the non-commercial costs in treatments. And so the other thing that has slowed or shut down work on our national forests for the last couple of decades is an unwillingness to invest what's necessary to get our forests to a resilient condition that will be able to produce timber, you know, decent-sized trees in the future. And the people who have starved the Forest Service of the funds to do that work are the industry. So everybody's got their levers. The environmentalists pull the litigation levers, the industry starves the agency of their budget through their connections in Congress. And so everybody just needs to kind of get over themselves and see the, the common sense, you know, moderate path forward and support that happening. And that is exactly what happens in these forest collaborators.
Well, as I say, I mean, this is a great conversation. Thanks for having it. Because, you know, as I say, I, I'll be supportive of these, these funds here. So that's what we're working towards today. I do like the idea of special project funding at this time, which just puts three line items in there, our proposed budget for this year, which will be finalized soon, so we can move on from this. But these are the conversations, I mean, I still.
Happy to have, happy to have them, yeah.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know how much it is the business of Deschutes County, but we, maybe we just have a work session where this is the topic and we bring some people in the room, too.
It is the business of Deschutes County. This is, this is what, this is what prevents our communities from burning to the ground. This is what keeps hundreds or thousands of people at work in, in the woods or in the mills. This is absolutely the business of Deschutes County and I'm happy to talk about it in more depth. And we can, but we should schedule a session with a bunch of experts.
And then, as I say, this is how I always conclude, that we need some biomass boilers or combined heat and power or whatever it is, you know, utilize the, the forest biomass, referring to any small diameter limbs, needles, anything that's combustible, which could supplement that, you know, whole industry.
I'm 100%, I'm 100% with you. It's just that we need to watch out for people who are selling us biomass strategies that actually make the, the, the work cost more, you know, because it costs a certain amount to burn it in the woods. But when, you know, someone in a biomass utilization facility says, yeah, we'll make all that stuff go away, you just bring it to us for free, it actually makes it cost more to dispose, you know, to get it out of, you know, to, to make it go away than if you just pile burn it in the woods, which also sucks, but, yeah.
Okay. So, thank you, Laura. I started from number, or C option, and then I went into that. But I think, you know, for clarity purposes, I, I don't see any problem with funding these as proposed.
So 20,000 each is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So, oh, right. Well.
Pending, pending presentations. Do you?
Well, if you want to, yeah, so this will be for the next few weeks as part of our, our budget, you know, be the spreadsheet associated with the lottery dollars finalized in the budget. So, yeah, I mean, I don't mind have, let's, presentations for all of them, that's fine. I don't know that it's dependent on that at this time.
Okay.
You know, so let's have presentations throughout the year, you know, later in the summer or whenever it is.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, so.
Yes.
Just clarity, yeah, so I think.
You want me to make a motion for those three groups?
Yeah.
Is that what you like? Okay, so please.
You can mention yours and he can mention.
Oh, well, I wrote them all down.
Okay, well, it's fine.
Well, whatever. Okay, so we are today allocating a one-time special project funding support for year 2022 for the 60,000, including Friends of the Children, the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative and the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project.
I'll second.
There we go. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Deere?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes?
Thank you.
Is that clear enough, Laura?
Yes.
Commissioners, I would just note that there's no modification to the FY22 budget that's necessary to implement what you just decided. 60,000 was put in as a sort of a placeholder. And then the allocation that you decided on today, we can just implement.
Yep. Yeah, so it is the spreadsheet which is separate than the budget finance line. I understand that, too, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for providing those options and bringing this topic back.
And seeing through our lengthy deliberations.
That's awesome.
I do have one additional follow-up item if now is an appropriate time.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So this is regarding a discretionary grant application we received from Furnish Hope to help cover their annual landfill costs for their donated goods that they cannot use, they're not able to use for their services. So I reached out to Solid Waste to discuss options, if there were any other programs that we could kind of discuss with Furnish Hope. And they do have a nonprofit fee credit program that would require application by this Friday. So the turnaround time is a little bit tight, which is why I wanted to bring it to you now, since our next grant review is in July. So I am seeking direction whether the board would like to maybe support Furnish Hope kind of transferring this request into that fee credit program, or if we'd like to consider it at the grant review in July.
So the fee credit program is a function of Solid Waste specifically. Is it funded by Solid Waste? It's basically unavailable revenue for Solid Waste is how it ends up being?
Correct.
Okay. And is there, has Solid Waste, any position from Solid Waste's point of view? Or they're, did they offer it or what?
They did, yeah. They, they said it, it sounds like it could be a good fit.
Yeah, okay.
The credit is up to $5,000 per organization, I believe.
And they've evaluated 1,500 or something would be the right amount to start with?
1,560.
Yeah, okay.
So I move with that we offer the free credit to Furnish Hope for our use at the Deschutes County landfill.
I'll second.
We're getting right to it there.
Very much.
So, yeah, calling for the vote, Commissioner Deere?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes? Done.
And I just wanted to recognize that, Laura, you gave us the number of the state lottery funding history that we're almost at $1 million in 2021. That's a, it's on a calendar year, correct? 2020 was 1.1 million, so definitely people are now buying lottery tickets again.
Yes. Yes, they're playing that video lottery in the bars and restaurants that have opened and we are expecting one more payment for this year. So, yes, it should be probably over what we got last year.
It does appear that it should be.
Yes.
Significantly over.
Yes.
Thank you, Laura, for that.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, which item?
Yeah, Sergeant Garabee was out in the field, so he's on his way back to the office, but he probably won't be there until 11:30. So, but he'll be ready before lunch if you want, would like to do the hearing, yeah.
So we're moving our agenda around a little bit. 17 was an add-on that we've heard of recently from Nathan Garabee, Emergency Manager. But at this time, let's go to item number 18, a public hearing on Guest Ranch and Title 17 text amendments. Yep. Okay. So we'll, we'll acknowledge that this was posted for our 9:00 AM meeting. We published an agenda that mentions 1:00, thinking it was going to be after lunch, but we're able to put it in this morning, so. Uh, this is, yeah, I guess, are you going to take the whole?
Yeah, I'm just getting set up.
Yep, okay. Just wondering how we'll get rolling here. Oh, look at that, two, two video views over here.
Okay. So, good morning, everyone. I thought I was going to be saying good afternoon, but.
Yeah.
Ripping through the agenda. For the record, I'm Brandon Herman, Associate Planner, Deschutes County, Long Range Planning. We are here for a public hearing on Guest Ranch and Title 17 text amendments. This is a follow-up to our May 24th work session, I believe it was. I do, since this is still a hybrid model and there might be some people joining on Zoom, I need to read through this opening process, which is a little bit lengthy, but I'll try to get through it quickly. And there's a little bit of back and forth at the end and then we can, we can get to it.
Let me read that first statement. It sounds like a kind of a chair statement here. So this is the public hearing on file number 247-21240-T-A to amend the Deschutes County zoning ordinance to address the striking of Guest Ranch Sunset Clause and reflect House Bill 2435 and other housekeeping updates for Title 17 subdivisions. So I'll let you take it from there.
Okay. The Board of County Commissioners will hear oral testimony, receive written testimony and consider the testimony submitted at this hearing. The hearing is also being recorded. The Board may make a decision on this matter today, continue the hearing to a certain date, excuse me, to a date certain, or leave the written record open for a specified period of time. The hearing will be conducted in the following order. The staff, in this case also the applicant, will give the report on this proposal. We will then open the hearing to all present and ask people to present testimony either by video or phone. You may also provide the board with a copy of written testimony. Questions to and from the Board Chair may be entertained at any time at the Chair's discretion. Cross-examination of people testifying will not be allowed. However, if any person wishes to ask a question of another person during that person's testimony, please direct your question to the Chair after being recognized. The Chair is free to decide whether or not to ask such questions of the person testifying. Prior to the commencement of the hearing, any party may challenge the qualifications of any Board member for conflict of interest. This challenge must be, this challenge must be documented with specific reasons supported by facts. Should any Board member be challenged, the member may disqualify himself or herself or themselves, withdraw from the hearing or make a statement on the record of their capacity to hear and decide the issue. Due to COVID-19, the hearing will also be conducted using Zoom. Follow Zoom procedures, excuse me, following Zoom procedures, we will ask if any members of the Commission need to set forth any information that may be perceived as a conflict of interest. This is how Zoom, the Zoom option will work. Zoom participants are either panelists or attendees. Panelists are on video, attendees can view, attendees can view the panelists. At the start of a meeting, all microphones are muted to prevent audio feedback. In addition, panelists will be the Board and county staff only at the start of the hearing. Attendees will be general public and media. County staff present its report and answer any questions from the Board. There is no sign-in sheet for remote testimony. Whether in person or remote, please provide name and mailing address at start of testimony. In addition, clearly state any procedural objections, if any, to the hearing's process as part of testimony. Elevated from attendee status to panelist, excuse me, applicant testimony, first elevated from attendee status to panelist. Next, the person will give presentation and answer questions from the Board. Finally, they will return, the attendee will be returned to attendee status and their audio will be muted. For public testimony, interested parties, Chair will then, Chair will next accept public testimony in the following order. Attendees participating by attending in person, attendees participating by computer, and attendees participating by telephone. For computer attendees, elevated from attendee status to panelist and audio muted first, they will provide their testimony. They will then be returned to attendee status and their audio muted and the next person is selected. The process repeats until all those participating by computer have testified. For telephone attendees, they will give the last four digits of attendee's phone number, excuse me, that'll be announced. The announced individual is elevated to panelist and answers whether they wish to provide testimony. If not, the person returns back to attendee status and their audio is muted. If they would like to provide testimony, the person will provide it and then return to attendee status and their audio will be muted. The next person is selected with the last four digits of their phone, their telephone number, and then the process repeats until all those participating by telephone have If requested by the Board, staff will provide closing comments. Chair DeBoe, you have a small piece there at the very end?
Is it time for my part?
It's time for your part, yeah.
Okay, does any Board member have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
I have none.
I have nothing to disclose.
I have none either.
Does any party wish to challenge any Board member based on conflicts of interest?
So at this time, we are going to go through our procedure for Zoom and telephone. So is this a raised hand feature, is the request? Is there anybody in the Zoom meeting with a raised hand feature? And any unidentified phone numbers that we can ask if they'd like to testify? Okay, seeing none. And as no challenges are presented prior to the opening of the hearing, does anyone have procedural objections to the public hearing? So I guess this is the second part of that. So just looking for a raised hand feature again, just in case. Okay. So seeing none, the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
Okay, off to the races. Again, this is a follow-up to our May 24th work session. There are two text amendment proposals here, first one being an update to Title 17 subdivisions and the second, Title 18 Guest Ranch update. And I should note, obviously, you can interrupt me at any time. So to start with the Title 17 text amendment, I will note that Cody Smith should be online today if we have any specific questions for him. This was staff-initiated based on recommendations from the county engineer for the road department. The thought here is it'll help to streamline the code by updating language and striking references that conflict with any Oregon administrative rules. It also redo, removes outdated content, phone numbers, references. So if you haven't had a chance to review the code and the proposed change, I'm happy to leave these up for a moment.
So let's acknowledge there was a work session on this item. We have been provided this package.
references that conflict with any Oregon administrative rules. It also redo, removes outdated content, phone numbers, references. So, if you haven't had a chance to review the code and the proposed change, I'm happy to leave these up for a moment.
So, let's acknowledge there was a work session on this item. We have been provided this packet previously and, you know, basically studied the topic of both of these proposed code, proposed code changes as group. So, as I've seen them, yep.
We're clear? Any specific questions before we move on, or Cody, or myself? No? Okay. The second proposed text amendment deals with guest ranches. This is also staff-initiated, and it will reflect changes from the House Bill 2435. It's a two-parter. It removes the Sunset Clause as a conditional use on land-zoned EFU, exclusive farm use, and it'll also require guest ranches to submit an annual report to their respective counties, that being Deschutes County. We feel, staff feels it's important to reflect those changes, changes to state law and our local code. Again, the proposed amendments or the proposed change, if you have any questions, I'm assuming you've read through this thoroughly.
So, yeah, we've been introduced to this also.
Okay. As a recap, our planning commission held a public hearing on April 22nd, during which time we had one public participant give testimonies suggesting overall and kind of more general improvements to Title Eighteen amendments, and we received no public testimony for the Title Seventeen amendments. At that time, the planning commission decided to hold the oral record open until May 15th in case anybody wanted to provide written comment. Two public comments were submitted in favor of the Title Eighteen, these are the Guest Ranch Sunset Clause amendments, and then we had one comment for the Title Eighteen amendments suggesting some general improvements to the code, and that one was submitted after the record had closed. Ultimately, the PC recommended to approve all of the text amendments, excuse me, recommended approval of.
So, did the planning commission have that public comment by Ms. Gould available? Or was that after that?
They, they, it was after that, so it wasn't submitted to.
So, it's only been to us as a board, not the planning commission?
That's correct.
Yep, thank you.
That's correct. And to wrap up, some, some options to move forward. You can continue the hearing to a date certain, close the oral record and leave the written record open to a date certain, close the oral record and the written record, and set the date for deliberations, or close the hearing and begin deliberations.
Okay, so this is a public hearing on the matter, and once again, do we have anybody requesting to testify? This would be a raised hand feature in Zoom or a phone number online? And seeing none, okay. Well, and, you know, this is kind of the, the status that the planning commission saw, so there's some engaging individuals. This is the next step as a Board of Commissioners, but I want to thank the planning commission for going through this also and really, you know, getting this package together for us. So, seeing no public testimony on the matter, we'll propose to close the oral and written record on the matter for the Board of Commissioners, if there's support for that.
Of course.
And so then, let's acknowledge that oral and written record closed for the Board of Commissioners, and at this time, is there support for deliberations?
Yes. I do believe that, we were told, there are two guest ranches in Deschutes County, correct?
Correct.
Two.
There are a couple of potential permits coming down the pipe, so we'll see. I think they're, they're hanging on to see what happens, happens here, so.
And that's state law that it did, put this in place also, so this is across the state. It's driven by, you know, legislative decisions, so it's good to know that they, and I'm sure that gives confidence to somebody looking at this opportunity also.
I think it's also worth noting that there is, I also included with the regular ordnance and emergency ordnance, wanted to, you know, enact this within the three-day period.
If we can unanimously approve this.
Brandon, where in the process do we consider these, these small, I would, I'd say relatively small wording changes that were proposed by Nancy Gould? I mean, is that, I'm still learning how all these processes work.
Me too.
Okay.
Nick Leelak, Community Development Director, and I actually don't have a copy of Ms. Gould's wording changes, but that would be something that the Board would consider during deliberations if you wished to make any changes per the public comments received, and I'm happy to take a quick, quick look at those, but I believe that our, I believe that our code mirrors state law, and so she may have had other, other comments. Two suggested improvements, I'm sorry, I'm just reading these quickly. The report collected from the guest ranch shall be made available to the public upon request, so this is not something I would recommend that be included in code, but this is something that we will provide as the Community Development Department, and we do this now, for example, as we collect destination resort overnight lodging requirements on an annual basis, also per statute. Ms. Gould and others request copies of those, and we always readily make those available. Depending on the time of year, I know Colin, Kyle Collins, our Associate Planner, just made those available within the last week, and then other information to ensure ongoing compliance with this section and each condition of approval. That's something that we, that we continue to monitor as we work with guest ranches and others to make sure ongoing compliance, but, but it really is a complaint basis. If something, we're not going looking for problems, if, if, if issues are coming up with any land use approval, a guest ranch, a destination resort, et cetera, it really operates on a complaint basis. So, certainly, I think Ms. Gould has good, good points here, but I'm not, I wouldn't recommend changing the text of what is before you this morning.
So, the culture and the intention of, of those requests are basically built into our system, the culture and the intention, and it's public information when the resorts are reporting, so it's just ease of access, so it's not a special request, public records request or anything.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Thanks for that clarification.
There you go. Well, so as, yeah, deliberations-wise, it sounds like there's, you know, support generally for this. Are we ready for kind of finalizing this, or will we put it at a different date? And then discussion about emergency clause.
Brandon, the, the people who are potentials, who are waiting to see how this plays out, is the emergency, would, would doing this on an emergency basis be important for them to, to move forward with their decisions?
I think that was the, that was the thought, and also just since it's already state law, getting it into code here as quickly as possible so we can, you know, so code can reflect that.
No. No. So, in the packet, there's two versions of the ordinance possibly, or?
Mm-hmm.
There's, oh, okay. The emergency, so it's not in the title, but it's in the, it's referred to as Section Five.
Yeah, Section Five, and.
Okay, so that's the only difference between those two?
Correct.
Okay, so the first version has a Section Five referring to the emergency. And then it's proposed for 30 days, so that's been mentioned in the past as a comfortable place for me personally, as in, Deschutes County Code requires 90 days unless it's by emergency. City jurisdictions have 30 days for, after adoption, so for a county to be able to say 30 days is very much in line with the efforts of other jurisdictions like a city. So, that's a, when we use the emergency clause, that's the kind of the, the middle ground on that.
Well, for matching state law, it does seem that 30 days would be appropriate, and especially if we have people in the community, because I do believe that there's some of the most beautiful horseback riding in Deschutes County. So, anytime we're supporting guest ranches and things, makes me remember why I moved here.
You ride them?
Yeah, like, yeah, you don't just feed them, you can ride them, and it's really beautiful, so.
Yeah, we think it's a really important component to supporting, you know, a more robust agro tourism economy here, so.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, if there's support and we're done with comfortable and then proceed post deliberations, there could be a motion here.
So, do we, someone going to make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, you, you all can help me out with the, the language here. I move that we approve this.
Commissioner, if I might, the motion would be approved, I believe, first and second reading, with an emergency clause for 30-day adoption of ordinance 2021-007.
Can I just say, as stated?
You can.
Okay, and I will second that, as stated.
And I clarified by title only.
Yes.
Okay, so there, it's been motioned and seconded for any other discussion? Call them for the vote. Commissioner Chang and Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So, at this time, this will be the first and second reading of ordinance number 2021-007, by title only, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title Seventeen to incorporate housekeeping and modernization updates and Title Eighteen updates to the Guest Ranch Sunset Clause text to ensure that the DCC incorporates changes to state law.
And you might add?
And declaring an emergency. Yeah, so at this time, move for adoption.
Okay, so I would.
Just move for adoption by ordinance number, yeah.
Move, and so state the, move to adopt ordinance number 2021-007.
And I will second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. We got it in before lunch today, so.
Thank you.
Back to the other applications and issues.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, I missed Ms. Gould's comments at the very, at the end of the findings there, so glad I was able to, to answer those questions.
And Brandon, thank you so much for joining the team, and do appreciate you being here.
I'm, I appreciate them hiring me. You all hired me. It's reciprocal.
There you go.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so thank you so much for that. We got it, got through that process. At this time, if Nathan Garabee is available, we have item.
Couple of minutes earlier.
Number seventeen, so he may or may not be.
His name up there. There was a, I think, at least one other item we could probably do in the meantime.
Oh, no, I think that's it.
No, there's, there was a letter.
Yeah, so other, other items, yep.
Regarding asking that we don't require employers and businesses to verify the vaccine status, I've been told by the community that people, people should be trusted, they've been vaccinated, and I've been also told that people are really getting very done with this, and hopefully they're, you know, we have a great percentage. What is it, we're almost at 70% in Deschutes County, so thank you, community.
So, it's that concept of self-attesting your vaccination status, or requiring by the Governor's Office and emergency orders, somebody to request your vaccination status is the concept of the letter, and I had it earlier, I don't have it with me now, but I'm just acknowledging what, what the proposal is.
Mr. Chairman? Do you want a copy of mine?
Well, looks like I got one coming. Thank you so much.
I'm, I'm not inclined to sign this letter. I, I, I believe we still have tens of thousands of people in our community who are unvaccinated, and as we know, COVID is raging through the unvaccinated population of Deschutes County. The, the Governor established this, you know, new risk system, I, you know, in large part, I believe, to, this new risk level system, in large part, I believe, to incentivize or encourage people to get vaccinated. At the same time that I, you know, I really don't want businesses to have to be vaccine cops, I don't see this, this incentive, the incentive structure that the Governor has set up, working without pushing people to get vaccinated and demonstrate that they've been vaccinated. I, I, this is what we're, you know, our, our current situation, where basically all of these businesses and the county itself are, you know, are operating under self-attestation, I think is, I think it's working. So, like, I don't, I don't necessarily see the need to do this letter, particularly in light of the fact that when we hit 70% statewide, which might be in as little as, the 21st, what is that, 13 days away, 12 days away? Mask restrictions go away anyway. So, you know, to try to continue to support incentives to get people vaccinated, I, I'm not going to sign this letter.
Did you mention that you think businesses are, are operating as if people are self-attesting?
I, I think pretty much, yeah, all the business, you know, almost all the businesses that I, that I patronize are essentially operating that way. They have, they'll put up a sign on the door, and, you know, if it's, if essentially it says, you know, you, you must be vaccinated in order to come here without a mask, I'm not seeing anyone go in with a mask on. You know, I'll, I'll wear, you know, I'll, I'll sometimes wear my mask just because, you know, to, to show support for that approach, because nobody is verifying that whether I've been vaccinated or not. That's why I, that's why I'm putting my vaccination card up here, you know, to, to support that, the approach that, you know, asking people kind of in a, in a, you know, in a direct way is going to encourage more people to get vaccinated. I, I think that is what businesses are doing right now, that they're, they're just, they're basically assuming that, you know, they're, they are basically asking people to self-attest, and that, like, I don't know of any businesses who are asking someone at the door, are you vaccinated, and demanding to see proof of that.
So, you're comfortable having people breaking the rules?
I am more comfortable having people know that there is a rule, and having to sort of grapple internally with whether they're, whether they have met that standard or not, than I am with just saying that there's no, there's no need.
Oh, I enthusiastically support this letter. I support two signatures on it at this time, and thank you very much for the discussion. So, if you want to make a motion, I will.
I move that I will sign the letter to the Governor regarding not requiring a verification of a vaccine status.
And I will second it. Thank you for the discussion, as I mentioned. Any other discussion?
No. I just know, I was at a business where someone came in and they were vaccinated, and they were, they didn't have a mask on, and they were told to leave. So, you know, it just kind of was a really, you know, there's been a lot of lack of civility in our world, and, you know, a lot of division, and I just would like to get behind that.
Well, I support the culture of people being safe and caring for each other, you know, especially if there's a question of the pandemic. This is in support of business and the comfort of different styles and types of businesses. As I say, if I'm going to go to a grocery store today, I will put on a mask, I don't even care what it says on the door, just seems to be a comfortable place for me and for everybody there. But there's other business types where it's just not appropriate, so having the orders in place at this time is just, I think we're past it, you know? For the last year, we definitely followed this, but it's time to ask the Governor to, you know, remove these requirements and have the communities, you know, support each other in these, as we're transitioning out of this pandemic mode, I guess I would say. So, with that, call them for the vote. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And Commissioner, Chair votes yes, so thank you very much.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly be past it in 12 days when we hit 70% statewide.
Any other items? I don't think I brought anything today.
No, well, we do have an executive session.
Oh, yeah, we do. So, yeah, we do have an executive session, I guess. Now, I didn't think about that when we were talking about finishing everything before lunch, but it looks like we could still do it. If we want to take a five-minute break, that might be good, and then get back together. Either Nathan will be available at that time, or we can notify him that we'll do an executive session, and he can follow on from there.
It's okay, so I'll give the property manager a head.
Oh, yeah, if she's available, assuming she's available, yes. So, how about a five-minute break at this time?
Oh.